Well, I'm going to go to the workshop for you to work. Do we have, do we have someone to shoot?
Uh, there was no one to sign me in. I just had another couple call me at Avenue. There's three sign in at first.
Okay. With our line, could some guy, uh, name of the agent? If you're going to sit in my place.
Here by the animal weeds and the glass, we've seen so much of them in this county. It's not, it's not very good with guys, okay? But whenever we did call, we, there was nobody that we could connect. But I found out now that you are the animal control. We called the cops, called the sheriff's department, they sent us to health department, and then they told us to come talk to the county commissioners. And I mean, I've got some pictures of some really bad neglect. And it's happening all over the county. This happens beyond property, but it's happening everywhere. And we're just, we need a way to figure out what to do about it. And after talking to you, I guess we call the county commissioners.
Call the county manager's office.
And y'all will go check this out. But there's no way you can go check this guy's, he doesn't live on property anymore. You cannot go check his house out now because I know he has other dogs.
It depends. We'll get together another day and talk about the specifics of it.
Okay, if I know that, but um, and Glenda, you have your, um, I mean.
Well, um.
Oh, yeah.
Have a chelver. That's, that, that was my concern. And I did call the sheriff's office. I, for two years, I watched him abuse down the road with me. And I finally had, oh, I can tell you from, I knew calling nothing would be done. And, um, I, and the deputy was going, I should run out and say that she indicated that it was not criminal. And she took pictures, we got help. And the shelter is not adequate, the ordinance of Graham County has, is shelter not adequate? And this dog is out there, uh, in all kinds of weather. The dog was out there this week. I can just hear that animal one degree. And I know a lot of people think that it's just a dog, it's just a cat. But it's a living being. And we are charged and careless of the animals. As human beings, we're charged to do that. And I don't think so long to ask to just get a shelter and really, you know, they would ask. Someone would slide that for them. At that house of straw, just something to make that animal more happy. It doesn't matter that it didn't die because the dogs still alive as of today. It matters that it's suffering. There's no way that you can be in one free way with no shelter and not suffer. But that was my concern. And I would just ask that we have some type of compliance here. At a penalty.
Of all of the ordinances that y'all have in place.
And the ordinance is right there showing that this shelter is not defined, okay? So why can't we penalize someone that? I don't mean you send them to jail or whatever. But if they're not willing to give a proper shelter, charge them a fee, something to make them realize that their rights are law. Because that is law. I think, is that my understanding, the ordinance is laws?
It's local laws, local laws, local ordinance.
Okay, that's what I meant.
There are so many cases in this county of animal endangerment. So we just call you, y'all gonna go check it? And, um, the, nobody knew you were animal control. I didn't know until yesterday. I know that Valor River doesn't know because I talked to Shannon yesterday.
Yeah, I just found out on too.
And, uh, I'm, I'm very well, but anyway, it was good to know there is animal control and we'll do whatever we can to help.
We've got an ordinance in place, we'll follow up.
Well, it sounds like you got a lot of facts. I don't know how you gonna do it.
Too many.
No way they can just hire another animal control? That that's their job?
Um. That's a conversation, that's a conversation for a later day.
We just want to make it known. I mean, I wish I could show everyone these pictures that I have. That was really, y'all would be very upset. Big example, I mean, these are horrible. Just trying to make a difference.
If you, if anybody had, next to make a report, call the county manager's office. We'll follow up.
And I did not know that before. I found that out yesterday and I'm glad to talk to you. That's it. I just wanted to say, and to follow the ordinance that the county already made in place.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Glenda? Glenda Rapp?
Yes.
Sandy? Uh. You got to have me on, Sandy, if you're here. Zarek?
Yeah, I was.
You're on, you're on, you're on the agenda. Do you want to say anything?
She's actually with me.
Okay.
If you have something you want to say, you can go ahead. Please do ask. My name is Cindy Zarek. Thank you for listening to me. Um, I've just recently become involved in some of the animal rescue and transport of the Valley River. And for, um, another transport company. Facebook seems to be where everybody is able to find out information. Um, there was a post on there about two dogs that had been abandoned at the, I guess it's the old water treatment plant over off of, um, Long Creek Road. And it was said that they had been there for several weeks. I borrowed a truck from the, um, animal, um, Valley River and I tracked those dogs. They were young dogs. Um, beautiful dogs. And I fostered them for about a month. And then I turned them, um, back into Valley River when they went on transport up to, um, New York. So I'm here to say that Valley River will work with you. And people have animals that they can no longer take, puppies, whatever, owner dies. They'll work with you. They may not be able to get them in the shelter that exact same day, but if you contact them. I had them less than a month and they weren't on the transport door. So my big thing is if we have a safe place, if, you know, so to let people know that they can do this with their animals, you know, if they have to surrender them, that they contact the shelter and they can arrange for them to be taken care of. I mean, those, those pups went from being feral pups in one month till I was able to have them walk on leashes. And one just got adopted. Um, the other one, adoption was pending. But, um, they, they did all their shots. They stayed in the group of these dogs. They provided food cage. So anybody that needs help with their animals, they will help and then get them on the transport.
Instead of abandoning them, that's what.
Instead of abandoning.
That happened recently, that big snub or buy small puppies.
Right.
There's primitive, um, cats.
Yeah, because people are driving, you know, and they dropped those two dogs there. And if somebody hadn't made the Facebook post, they'd, and it took them a week to catch them. So they were at least out in the wild for three weeks. They were surviving on a dead deer leg. Um, but if there's, or we could come up with a safe place in town for them to surrender. But the ideal thing would be is if they could just foster them in place and then the river will handle it. But the knowledge needs to get out there that this is available. Instead of somebody just going up to the top of the chair hailing and dumping their dogs. But, um, you know, I mean, I'm just willing to help out too. We're also wanting to try to start a food pantry for people. You know, there are a lot of people that have had to give up their dogs because they can't afford to eat them. So we're trying to start a dog food pantry for each of these animals so they can stay in the homes that they're with. So we just want to see, provide for our animals up to date, get everything up to date, you know? And it's 2023, these animals don't have to be outside starting freezing and having them dumped, thrown in dumpsters and stuff like that. That's all. I just, you know, want that knowledge out there.
All right.
Thank you, thank you, Glenda.
Does anybody else have anything? Anybody who can help, come here. We got anything else in workshop session?
Yes.
All right, workshop session's adjourned. We'll open up maybe later, five thirty. All right, I'm going to call this Graham County Board of Commissioners making the order on January twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Members of the county board of commissioners are advised to abide their duty under the state government ethics act to avoid conflicts in the interest of the appearance of such conflict. And further are instructed to refrain from participating in any matter coming before this board of county commissioners with respect to which there is conflict of interest or appearance of such conflict. Wish to tell you, you have a question.
That's great. Good afternoon, Father, and just thank you for everything that you do for us. And Father, we're just so thankful for the blessings and the gifts that you've bestowed upon us. Father, we ask that you just continue just to be with us, be with our county. And most of all, Father, just be with those who are sick and ill. And just continue just to touch and love and hand on. And Father, we're just so thankful for what you do. And Father, we ask that you just continue just to give us the thoughts and the things that we need to do for the county. And Father, we just ask all this in your name, the precious and holy name, Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Direct, giant, just adjourned.
Yes, sir. Under number six, we'll put as B, it's Jeanne Williams. Under number seven, one A father, uh, is absent due to sickness. So we're gonna put, uh, Karen Foxon, an attorney. Ouija, I, I know I don't never say it right, I apologize. And for personnel, yes. And then number eight, AA, we'll put Brian Stevens, our EMT director. He needs to talk to you in just a minute about a name of us. And Sheriff, you still need to be on clothes.
I'm there.
Okay, so we will remove Sheriff Foxit, our number thirteen.
Ma'am, it's, it's not a perfect comment.
Okay.
Uh, much to approve the agenda with our changes.
So.
First thing. Father. Much to approve the minutes from our workshop, we're going to descend now to twenty twenty-three. Second, second, no discussion. Hold on, Biden. Can somebody grab a, hold a comment pie at the back? Is there anybody else that wants to be on public comment to talk about our sanitation sites? Except for the two I've gotten near agenda and the one that's on public comment. All right. Before we go forward with that, I'm going to, sorry, just to cut the findings. I wanted to make sure that the public was aware of a few of the things that we considered when we, uh, when we made this decision. Um. Of course, a lot of it was fine, some of it was fine, actually. Uh, we seen the cost savings in, uh, closing some sites, closing some places. Um, currently, our budget's about one point four million. But we bought some trucks and our current, our budget, if we left the dumpsters as is, will be around a million dollars. Um, we seen a net gain with cardboard by closing and controlling the dumpster sites. I could figure out by tonnage, the revenue, the extra revenue that we could bring in and keeping it out of Baltimore, which is landfill. Fuel and labor. We estimated there'd be around thirty to thirty-five thousand dollars in savings just in cardboard. Um. Of course, it's no, it's no secret, we know we had illegal dump and they were all three sites. Um. Construction and demo debris has to go over the scales legally. Um. We know we had other counties using our green cans and the taxpayers were paying for their garbage. Um. Based on a lot of those estimates, we look to save about a hundred and forty thousand dollars by controlling what goes in the green cans. And controlling the illegal dump. Um. Because of the shorter range of our truck, we hope to save about forty thousand dollars a year in fuel. Uh, when we capture the metal for recycling, we hope to save about fifteen thousand dollars a year. And when we can, when we can control the sites and keep people from lighting on fire and ruining them, then we look to save about eighty-four hundred dollars a year and having to buy new green cans. Um. And that's all stuff that is happening currently with the set. There's, there's several other things that we could do on down the road that could bring even more revenue in and cut even more costs. Um, but overall, we estimated that we would save anywhere between two and three hundred thousand dollars a year for the, for the sanitation. Um. You know, those guys that market sanitation, they have to deal with lost stuff. Um, when you've got construction and demo debris in the green cans and night dump, we've had two dogs coming through the, through the windshield with those trucks. Um, you know, we found laugh labs under pressure. That animals poisoned snakes. One guy even got bit one time cleaning up construction debris in a, in a site. Um, you know, it's broken vice, needles, there's mad along the ground. Uh. You know, paint motor oil, that's illegal to put in a, in a green, in a green can. Um. They've been a mess for a long years. Uh. We seen the need to control the sites, to control what goes in the sites. They're manned. Uh, listen, I know that it's an inconvenience for folks taking a lot of these out. I get it. Um. If you look at the way our surrounding counties do it, it's still a lot more convenient than they do it. Um. You know, the, the sites are manned. You've got people there that separate the cardboard, can help the elderly, can help the disabled, can keep the sites clean all the time. Uh, there's a lot of benefit. Now, we can go, we'll go through this public comment and if somebody wants to say something, you're more than welcome to. If a lot of people want to talk, we'll try to keep it to two to three minutes. Um, we've got three now. If you decide you want to say something, no, lean, go ahead. We didn't walk into this decision and think that we did, we might not have to change something or tweak something. Uh, you know, we, we extended the hours, we seen that as, uh, a problem, try to be more convenient. Um, you know, we're willing, we're willing to hear from the public, sure. Uh, but we'll go ahead and we'll start with the public comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner, for having a very distinct hearing to say. As we all know, January first, we received this in our newspaper. While going forward, since we all seen what was received in the newspaper, I would like to have a public record, which one is the commissioner, voted against taking our parents. A lot of hardship has been tied on people because it can't be removed. People around town here don't hurt. People around Chicago or Na'atia and run it, it don't hurt. People around here don't stop, don't hurt anybody. And he started on the west part of the county, the south part of the county. The thing people don't mind brings them just driving miles to come up here just to dump the trash. Lot of elderly people live down there. They can't afford gas and replace. Our tax rate is doubled. This, everybody said, you heard, I was saying here, watch the meeting there. How many people has come up here, talked about their taxes, double, you're trying to do something wrong? If we got that much tax rate coming in, we should probably take some of this money and give it back to these counties or the people of this county instead of just sitting out here doing, cause it's a fair. With these many sites, you won't have enough seven people working sites. Seven people is a big payday for this town. Our town, you saw enough government and people out here working man. I don't know about children, but you want to keep on going round and round and our taxes keep growing up? Or just, or let, keep letting all this go about? But you know what gets me on some of this stuff here? Third, I say, it was, uh, eleven years ago, just started this recycle program, about eleven years ago, went on to the end. Didn't work, did it? Here we are again, same issue facing the same crisis, same things, overdone. It's in the last, it's on the cost. There's got to be a little fear on the bottom of this thing you're talking about, this is. Fine, I bet tourists and business can be, are going to serve five, five places. How are you going to determine who's, who's the tourist and who's not? Are you, are you, are you? Are you supplying or looking at the models from Cherokee County where they're going to have stickers for rising? How, how, how do you want to know? How do you want to know who's the rest of the security and who's not? How do you, how do you figure out? Best I see, I come down here, the buffalo down here today. Uh, Black Hole was being pumped out, building, pumping out, pouring out the public. That's expensive. It's county's going to pay for it. They want these sites. Granted, I did, none of the sites will get pretty rough, some of the ads. But you know what? This stuff here like, I don't know who talks this in here, but disposable evidence, that should be something for the sheriff. I mean, that's a pretty serious crime when we disposable evidence. I don't know who, but they've got this studying to think. But I don't think exactly what's evidence being exposed on it here. You think the tanks want to stop? The horse will stop the days? No, I discussed it in my mouth. You won't know what I'm doing in the trash. You can't know what I'm putting in there. You won't say, no, there's what a reason for that to hurt. But you can't know what I'm, that can't, it's out of my sight. So that's not going to stop when that stuff comes into. Granted, you're going to start something, the nastiness of government after keeping clean. Cause you say the thing is, um, we didn't know about all this. All I know was in St. Keener watching the meeting here. And Josh Stevens and them, I couldn't manage the, running the transfer around here, got a group call. Jacob, we sit there and said, we're going to set up a special meeting. And also, you know, also having some, some control concrete, basically control on this stuff that was going on. It's had meetings about all these sites and all this stuff been going on. You did not bring a public storm in the pit, but since the grand family been come out here and voiced their opinion before you enforced that they saw him about it. We just counted the citizens of the county, grand county, managed the right of saying walk those off in our county. Now, we can't stand up and do that and stand the whole county accountable for it and burdening the man's welfare. But I'm afraid a lot of people's going to be held accountable for this, especially when they come to watch the field private. You do know it's coming up. So I watched what you was doing here very closely on this. Cause you aren't going to be held accountable. I'm going to make sure that I see that this is held accountable. Cause I got too many friends that said, man, it's fucking big, it's all this thing. It's costing them, it's another pass on, basically, it's all this. Don't tax our people no more. You's got enough of our tax money. You got to be in tax rate, you made a crease for the profits. Don't tax us no more. Give it back to people. You got that much money? If you need, if you need, if you got money, that's your name's plan. Get the money to the sheriff's office, that Brad, Brad Foxit having done more duties instead of having these all in anything or this traffic, uh, bunch of stuff, somebody come in and dump the trash. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, today, we actually had three full time, one part time.
Only three full time.
All three full time. To command, um. The miller rate didn't come down, the baggies went up. We're all aware of that. Um. The only, the best way that we can cut the mill rate, that we can cut taxes, is to find cost savings in our departments. And this was, in my opinion, this was going to be a, a really good way to be able to potentially do that. Um. Jeanne Williams.
Thank you so much for allowing me to speak. When I first read about the changes to the dumpsters, I was split it, I'll admit. I lived, I lived out on Yellow Creek. The glass place isn't bad most of the time. And, and I'll admit now I've relaxed some, it's an inconvenience for me. As, as he said, the people further out in the county, especially the ones way out on that branch, it's an extra half an hour, each one, for them to take their trash. I talked to some people that I know, and you know what their answer to me was? Hey, when you go in town? Well, all of those people live near one of the dumpsters that are staying up. As near as I can tell, all y'all live near one that's staying up. Or you're going to the same one that you always did. It hasn't changed. Well, sometimes because I live, uh, the outskirts, there's a general feeling that if you don't live in the central county, well, oh, well, too bad for you. And that's what this felt like. But as I started researching it, and that's what I like to do is research stuff. I became really less concerned about what happened than the process. Back in June, the sanitation department came to you and went through a list of problems. And as I read, I understood more why, why we have to do something. They're, they're very valid problems. But, you know, it went from, they had fabulous solutions, including that we have an ordinance, but it's not enforced. And that's kind of the thing about the animals that speaks to that. Why don't we have ordinances that are not enforced? So instead of enforcing ordinance, and one of the things was that the two worst places were around twenty-eight in Berry. And their suggestion was we should man those two, not three, two places, because that's where most of the problems are. So we went from manning the two places that are the biggest offenders, people from out of county coming, to closing a bunch and manning three, requiring even four people. So, so, and at the time, so one of the suggestions from them was to close, have gates and close them off at eight o'clock. And then Commissioner Williams said a very valid thing, people will just set their garbage in front of the gates. And I asked you to watch over the next few months because the people that don't care and dump their stuff there are not suddenly going to see the light and take their garbage to the right place. It will be in front of the dumpster sites, at the old dumpster sites, or as I'm already seeing, off the side of the road. When garbage starts lining the sides of our highways, we going to change that sign that says, welcome to Graham County, your natural destination, to, welcome to Graham County, your garbage on the side of the road destination? If we put in the budget for who we're going to hire to clean up the stuff on the side of the road, the people who let that are not the nice people who are going to follow the rules and do everything else. You've just, I think, pushed a large part of the problem off to a different situation. And I looked at the savings. Um, the numbers you gave now are different than the ones I see from, from the notes, from the workshop section and so.
A lot of those, a lot of them included are stuff that we're not doing yet.
Right. And, and you have different savings. I'm pretty skeptical about some of them because there's not enough detail in there really. Um, and, you know, with the money, as I'm, it was bad then for me probably to start looking through all this because I came across other things that I've never bothered to look at anything I didn't see. And, and I kept coming across notes where people were coming to the commission and being really distressed about their taxes. My taxes went up a lot. A lot of people I know their taxes doubled. And the answer was always, well, the state makes us do a reappraisal every seven years, I think it is. And we did the reappraisal and we'll look at your appraisal, but I'm sorry, you know, that's, that's what happened. But in truth, a tax bill is two parts, is the appraisal and the miller rate. And yes, you lowered the miller rate after the reappraisal. But as I found, the state makes every county publish after the year that they do the reappraisals, a revenue neutral miller rate. So if you were to, you know, take in the same amount of money, but what we're doing is making people pay their share based on whether their. but what we're doing is making people pay their share based on whether their properties were poor, and that's on what it would be. Graham's counties would have been point four five seven. Our taxes at the time were at point six five, so you lowered it to point five nine. That really, though, is great, we can say, well, we lowered the miller rate. But from a revenue neutral standpoint, you increased it thirteen cents. It was the highest increase in the whole state this year. Most of the counties have been approved and printed off from the state. You can get miller rates, and you can go to each county, which I did, and look at what their revenue neutral money was. Their number was, because you have to college it. And most of them went up a penny. Six, eight cents, I highlighted out of the, this list of people, cause not every county does it every year. I highlighted the ones that went up over ten cents, and there are one, two, three, four. One county was ten, one eleven, one twelve, and we were thirteen cents. We raised stars from a revenue neutral standpoint, more than any other county in the state. And, and that's, so it's disingenuous to say, oh, we lowered the miller rate. Because, because you really didn't for people's self. And then I also went and looked from this same spreadsheet, I could get everybody, every county's miller rate, just flat out miller rate, for the year, for the last several years. And then I took it and I sorted it so that the lowest miller rate was at the top, going down to the most expensive county. And I highlighted the ones that are around us, just in western North Carolina, like Macon, Swain, Jackson. And Macon has the lowest taxes in the whole, in the whole state. And yet they have manned trash things, I think it's like eight of them. They're not all open all hours every day, but they have eight of them. Swain, which has pretty low taxes, and I wonder if that's where we're trying to go to, where we're going to have, um, everybody has to have a sticker that you pay for, and it costs a hundred and twenty dollars if you're a homeowner, and more if you're this, and more if you're that. That's the only way I see that you're going to decide who's a resident and who isn't. And as a side note, one of the comments in the notes was, well, we can get the VRBO people then to pay for their garbage. The VRBO properties, the property owners are already paying tax. And I would put it to you that those properties contribute less garbage than if they were being owner occupied. So that's another of those disingenuous things, well, let's tax them, they don't really pay taxes. But I went through this and highlighting the, the, um, the counties and their, where they stand in the state of how high their miller rate is. Cause I said, Macon is number one is the lowest, out of hundred, we come out at thirty four. That, that's pretty sad. In western North Carolina, there are only two counties that have higher miller rates than we do. That's kind of sad. And then, like I said, that doesn't really have to do with the trash pickup. But, but it was a real eye opening thing to see these kind of numbers. And then, what, what I hear, though, in the notes in here, is that, well, we lowered them, we did what we could. So I kind of don't understand, and, and I do need to know who I have to talk to, there are some things, I did a spreadsheet of the, um, of the revenue budgets for like the last five or six years, the ones I could get, one of them's missing on the website. But, but there are some, I don't understand what some of the line items are and why they changed, and why there's like eight hundred thousand dollars in miscellaneous this year.
Well, I'm more than happy to go through that.
Yeah, who would I talk to about that?
Our little fire finance officer over here, she can explain all that to you.
Okay.
I want to add a couple pieces to the puzzle that you're charging for Graham County that makes us a bit unique. And, and there are other counties that, that do the same thing that we do. But we only, we only, we veiled our budget completely off of our mill rate. The revenue that we bring in from our miller rate. Plenty of other places, they impose fire tax, they impose public safety tax. Cherokee County charges seventy five dollars per meter, per living space, for a garbage fee. So there's a lot of what I would call hidden taxes. These are the earnings that drive their, the actual tax that the, the, the citizens have to pay. It's a lot higher than just straight up.
I can't find that in Macon so much, but I did see that in Cherokee.
And another thing that, that, that we have, we have to understand is Graham County can only tax twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight percent of our weight. The rest of it's federally owned, owned by the ABCI, uh, you know. And, and it's, it's just untaxable, you know, the federal government gives us hilt.
Yeah.
Paying low, payment low taxes. I think it comes out to, what, a dollar and eighty seven cents an acre? And you're talking about all the foursomes in Graham County.
But that doesn't require much services either.
It, it doesn't. I mean, as far as I know.
We have some fire things sometimes, I.
Yeah.
And, and the three, and I meant to say at the beginning, this is one of when I was angry before, instead of just going, I can't believe this, um, I, I expect my county to provide several major services for my taxes. And the first is law enforcement, and I think they, I think we have a wonderful kind of area. Um, the second is, um, the fire and rescue, and I think that's beyond fact. And I commend this county, it, it beats anything I've ever seen. Um, the medical, I've been somewhat disappointed in, in how all that's, that's happened with yours with care. Um, I, I don't understand that, and I'm not going to get into trying to understand that, but, but that, and then the trash. And, and I, I felt really let down with this whole scenario, where you went from, I didn't, I, and I know there must be meetings that happened that we have on the side in our college, but how we went from, in the first meeting, um, in June, where there were suggestions to man just those two, and, and we need to enforce some things, to, um, in September, where we're gonna just have three left open. You know, and, and I don't understand in the process, as part of the process then, I couldn't figure out how we went from this fairly reasonable, man the two that are problem children, to close all but three.
You can go back years. Graham County's talked about garbage for.
Oh, no, I'm not saying that.
We've looked at lots of different scenarios, but wait, no, I haven't.
Find that in the notes where you put scenarios, that's.
Over the years, on top of years, it's been a topic of conversation.
I mean, and there are valid concerns, I'm not, I'm not arguing that point at all. When I read through it, I just had not encountered them. I know there's sometimes things shouldn't be at Glens, but it certainly doesn't read like the stuff that apparently happens at some of the others. So maybe I'm in some shelter. But my biggest concern going forward is for the people who are at the far end of the county. I mean, to ask people to drive an extra house, and we talked about fuel savings on the truck, if you add up the fuel savings, the fuel increases for everybody who lives out like on Meadow Branch. It's probably overdoes what the county's going to say.
Wait, I mean, I really believe that the cost savings numbers that are estimated are really conservative. We really.
It'll be interesting to see next year how that.
Absolutely.
And I'm, I'm fine seeing how that plays.
And if we can add to it, if, if we can, you know, get, you know, add, add to the service with, you know, pull behind, all the packages, she want to have the big garbage trucks, all the mechanic, and there's lots of ways we can go with this. I mean, it's not, it's not a, you know.
And I guess I didn't understand why you didn't go first to, to much less expensive situation of having cameras and then enforce it, taking what's on the cameras and actually going to people and finding them, because that's the only way you'll get people to stop. Other than manning them.
Yeah, you know, rarely in Trinity, the only thing that cameras are beneficial for is vandalism. And.
No, because I forget which, I think it's Macon, maybe it might be Cherokee, actually publishes pictures of people that were unloading and say, help us find this person, and people turn them in.
What?
It's, you know, it's on, on one of their websites, pictures that they've got, and somebody got some stuff they shouldn't do. You know, there are. You know, I don't know if you talked to other counties.
Well, what if I, what if I had cameras at some dumpsters, I just don't have.
You, you know, you, it has to be managed well, too, you know. You have to not just have a camera, you have to do something, what the camera tells you. So, but thank you again for allowing me to speak, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan, the chief.
I'm, I'm here. I mean, bringing, you know, but I'm concerned about moving to the dumpster, seeing the cost. It's been me, that hardship, that's a lot of people, people on fixed income, social security, stuff like that. It's, uh, talking about savings are ready to go. We have, uh, two, three garbage trucks that makes the picking of the garbage, whatever.
I don't think we have two.
Two?
Two, okay. We have many, how many residents, friends? Do you know how many?
Ten, ten.
I mean, you think that's the crime there, come on, put in, into the dumpster?
Um, having population spread.
I don't see how the cost savings is going to be offset for the taxpayer much. Because especially with people on fixed income. I figured up the other night, just sitting there in the house in my head, how much I paid taxes, property, vehicles. I was just paying commodity insurance, it all increased the last couple of years. Insurance on my vehicles, everything's going in, I understand. But this puts a hardship on the people that's on fixed income, terrible. I brought in ten thousand dollars of your social security, I have Medicare and everything, I'm better than. About five things I'm going to put in my home, my vehicles, as much as our plans, our goods, stuff like that, road, road, trip, what you worked three years ago. I don't see how you can figure, we're saving even more for the taxpayer, and we moved the dumpsters that are used. And she mentioned about enforcing the laws that we have, that's what's wrong with our board or their dad. We have laws in effect to protect America from just not enforcing our laws. And remember, when you move the garbage out of yellow, the garbage dump, the garbage debris, the aluminum cans, washing machine, stuffs like that, being thrown out, like, oil, 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 property, and flying, you have to have a vertical, and I remember it, but about since then, you've moved, we've removed one, two, three at a time, like that, every area in the county, any problems. You're backing up, just enforce law, catch the few that's doing it, instead of putting the hardship on all the people. The good people, Graham County people, that's the last of the rounds. I can tell you how it works. I heard there's a big fat dog, and I didn't know it from this guy here, can't follow me, then he's coming in the door, said, you missed the good. I said, who can? I've got three birds down, ten dogs in the box. Well, get cured, my wife's in the lock, and I'll bury her. I feel it. But I'm trying now, I'm going to the lab, they could. This is the point of my matrix. If I've got one dog that barks continuously, who do I start with when I start breaking dogs and bark? I start with the bad. I've got three in the market, I've got these in the market, I've got these, I've got a milk shop already, put on all, and one, I whip all of them. For the one dog in the market, I've put in the shop, that's the point of my matrix. I wouldn't bark, just want the bad. The state lady, with Graham County, please, you're punishing all the best for the half marriage for you. It's not right, it's not good. People reject, I reject, I like your sites, oh, I know you, want to know all that. But this is not the way to do your taxes, your taxes went up, and yet we're getting your benefits, or landfill what used to be a gas, landfill used taxes, including your property taxes. Getting away with it, we're paying for a service that we're not getting. We're having to do the service that you're getting paid to do. Is that something? When I was talking about the dog very second ago, I can control them while I'm back. This is the point of my matrix. If we enforce the law we have about dumping debris and stuff, just to you that out of the damn, I'm being penalized. Make them pay. Those that are scared, they go, I'm thinking about the brain, they're going, they're going, I'm reading, right? No, I'm going to take a check, they might be a gambling act, true. Or I'm not like, I'm not going to take that check, I'm taking it all, I'm going to recycle it, I'm not throwing it up. It'll work. Same as before, it didn't work, I started with water, water, and water, I put color on all the water. If the state can start coming in, I get in. Third one's starting coming in, I get in. The, the ones that don't work, what if they're finding them real quick? They figured out what's going on, they want to stay there, they want to know that. The ones doing the fact, not everybody wants it.
Bye, Ed.
I just wanted to thank all of you for the opportunity to be heard. Um, I didn't have a lot of time to prepare, I heard about this sound one hour ago. But I'm very grateful to have, to just listen, to hear this side of things, the other side of numbers and research. Um, my name's Ange Baxter, by the way. And I want to represent those on the side of hospitality, short term rental owners, their staff, and also the forest service. Um, my husband works for forest service, he's a firefighter, first responder. Um, I own a small hospitality business here, and I represent several homeowners that don't have the chance to be here to check on their properties. And they are very concerned about this. I received messages from all of my, my homeowners. Um, I live way out at Bluebore, so about twenty five minutes away. Our, our snowmobile location was shut down very unexpectedly. Uh, I didn't know about any of this. And it was kind of shocking to pull, pull around town with other people's trash in my vehicle and not know where to take it. Um, so since the dumpsters have closed down, our community, we have one, uh, elderly man, eighty years old, who kind of had to get together to help his trash for him. And, you know, that's just one person, but I'm hearing that it's a, it's a major need, you know, it's not just our little subdivision. Um, but when the dumpsters were shut down on Sweetwater Road, how long ago was that? Two years ago? One of the properties that I manage, we had to change a lot of things about our trash policy. We had to start targeting guests to remove their trash. Because hospitality cleaners did not go in the direction of a dumpster to their home. So they were stuck hauling someone else's trash until they could get to a dumpster. Um, that resulted in some bad reviews. And I'm telling you right now, that when guests don't know where to take garbage, because they, you know, they've been shut down, they don't know where to go. And especially if it's not available on Sunday, our, our clients, our homeowners, we're going to start getting bad reviews, frustration from guests, um, campsite campers. I can tell you the amount of stress that this is putting on the forest service. Uh, my husband is not getting a raise to take on extra trash duty. That is not in his job description. And yet it's falling upon them, very, in a very big way. And, and he's not the only one. So, uh, our first responders are now taking on trash duty around campsites around Grand County. Um, I guess that, that pretty much covers it, I can just say, if, if a compromise was possible, is possible, I, I know we'd all appreciate that. Having it closed on a Sunday is a major inconvenience, especially for tourists.
We're open on Sunday, right?
No.
The convenience sites are, recycling, recycling stands are.
So I live at Bluebore, um, there are a lot of times where I travel to Maryville one at least every other week. I cannot tell you how many times I have to dump our trash at Gill Gap. That is forty minutes away from my house. Because it's the only. Because it's the only dumpster on the way to Maryville from Bluebore. If I came through town, that would have 20 minutes onto my trip. So a lot of times we use Deal's Gap, there's no dumpster on the other side of the lake. So that's where a lot of the campsites are. Yeah. So the last two Sundays that I come through town to dump my own trash on my way to Murphy, and I didn't have to haul my trash to Murphy, shopping, and home. And that was extremely frustrating, because I didn't know, you know, not a lot getting used to this system. So if a compromise could be made, that would be wonderful. But again, I just wanted to speak on the side of hospitality crews, homeowners that don't live here, that do pay taxes. And navigating the logistics of hospitality in Grand County. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else will speak?
I had to go get wound up, I'd say it last time. I have found love something there. A man lived in this town about 20 plus acres across, that's not where I live. 20 plus acres. By our view, nowhere crazy, but I did finish a plan. I claim right to my taxes, man, is because of nowhere crazy. Only time I say that creates a little bit when the leaves down the winter. My taxes ran from $407 to $1,000 a piece, 200 pieces, $50 a year. I've got a high tax. Part of that forest service took place around me, that I'm paying for that. Now you tell me what's right about that. What is right about that? And this garden, too. There's a lot of nights I have hit that lane two, three, four o'clock in the morning. I'm out there getting my beautiful product. Do you think that garden sits back my truck at home? No, I'm not. I don't know. But something they can play there, and I can stand here and talk and talk and talk and do like that. But I'm, remember, baby, when it comes later, I'm not around with this, but I know. To look at.
Thank you. Anybody?
Thank you. And let me say, I don't have a lot of power, and I'm speaking just for myself. And retired people in this county, of which I was one, I am retired, but I also work, I don't have a job. I can't leave garbage sitting in my car while I've been working all day, ridiculous nonsense. And I know there were problems with the dumpsters on Lula. But we would be glad to report people coming in from other counties or making messes. We know we had some guys up there that actually subsidized their income by going through the dumpsters. And as long as they didn't make a mess, we didn't care. But I will tell you, you cannot blame all that on other counties. I have seen some that I know for 100% certain, some of the messes from our local businesses, not from Lula, but from Robbinsville, who just destroyed our dumpsters. So, yeah, we had some in other counties, but you can't blame it on other counties. I remember how it used to be before you got dumpsters, there were washing machines, counted everything, thrown over the vines. It was hard, it was heartbreaking, ruined the beauty of this county. And that's what people came, as solid as they came into the county. Now, you're counting on people coming in through your new road, but I will tell you, tourists from Georgia, other counties come through Tulu. We don't blow all that trash problem off and talk them around for people coming into our county. Yes, you're going to save, what did you save, 40,000 for gas? To dump it on the elderly in this county, which 25% of this county, their citizens are over 65, according to the latest census. Now, I didn't have time to do it whole while, because I didn't know about this until today. But I'm just speaking for my part. And so, if you need to make money, instead of pandering to the rich elite who are already here, let's get some businesses in here, and I hope the new road counts. But we're going to have to have commissioners and citizens who really want to have businesses to come here. And she was talking about tourism and everything. We need to put a good foot, and make it good for everybody, but you're really hurting your elderly citizens. I'm one, I'm seven, widow, work every day. And everybody said, well, you can get somebody to have a big get out for $40 a month. $40 a month's a big deal to me. That's a lot in my particular income, which is the only income in my house, not that much. So I don't think that putting your dumpsters where you have left them, you leave the lower part of the county, you just, you know, pretty much pissed on them, add the people on the eastern part, like Tulu, like we don't care. And we understand that this move was made right, made right after the time was cut off for filing for a commission. Curious time. However, I would ask you to consider the elderly in this county, 25% of your county is elderly, over 65, probably even living on limited incomes. Don't put it all on our backs, okay? It may not be a big deal to you, but when you get to the point where you are living on this kind of income, that $40 or that extra two trips to town every day, that's a big, think about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Does the board have anything to add?
No, I would like to say that, just for me, I certainly would have liked to have had all the discussions that I'm threatening that, and any other discussions that our citizens would have liked to brought into this process, rather to the decision being made. I would have liked to have seen enough public hearings. Now, we know that everybody is invited to every meeting that we have here. And everybody's very busy, but certainly, I'm glad to see people come in to any meeting that we have. But I certainly would have loved to have had some public hearings, so that all the citizens would have felt that, that they had been served in that regard, prior to making decisions. That's just for me.
All right. Sheriff Hoxton. And David, which I named, just come on.
I think when sheriff stands back, it sends me in. My name is David, which ever parliament, and I am the attorney for the Grand County Office of Sheriff. On January 16th, the late Sheriff Brad Hawson received a report from Cleveland Daniel's group regarding lead-based paint in the Grand County jail. We are beginning the process, and we are here to communicate with county commissioners, let them know regarding this process, and looking on general statutes. The sheriff is charged with maintaining jail, maintaining security in the courthouse, and performing the duties and obligations to a separate 162. We believe that maintenance of a jail has come into question regarding the health, safety, and welfare inmates this time. Late Anthony Scalia said, Justice on the United States Supreme Court, that when an inmate is in the custody of a jail, he is as defenseless as a newborn child in regard to his healthcare. The former sheriff of Haywood County, Greg Crisper, said once at county commissioner meeting, that only 90% of his inmates that came through his jail were healthcare compromised due to drug usage or the nuisance, pulmonary issues at that time. At this time, as I understand it, the Grand County Sheriff's Office is having sent out a count of double-digit amounts of inmates, and currently is able to house eight inmates. We have followed our rules and regulations. We have notified the North Carolina Jail Inspection Program, and they are going to review the information that we've been provided. Of note, from the survey results, there are over a dozen findings from this engineering group that are highlighted and bold, that indicate that the results are beyond an acceptable safety level. Minor remediation is not an option. The sheriff, the office of the sheriff, is one of Baydon Tech, goes back to the 1200s in England. The sheriff is constitutionally protected to office in the state of North Carolina, and was well-identified in 2015 by the North Carolina Supreme Court. And in that case, they articulated the charge of duties, the shift, maintaining jail is one of them, maintaining the safety, health, and welfare of the inmates as well. We are going to begin working with the North Carolina Jail Inspection folks, and we're going to have to come back and report those findings to a lady clerk of court, Amy Holloway's here. I believe she may want to talk to the commissioners as well. At some point, we need to notify the appropriate judicial officials, the district courts, the spirit courts, and we need to let them know about these reports and the process that we're taking. With all due respect and brotherhood very much, our spirit court judge is retired in our district. So we're going to have to talk to AFC to find out who's going to be working on these issues with us. At this time, I believe we need to do our due diligence. We need to talk to the state, and we need to begin exploring serious options regarding how and where we house our inmates, starting from January 16th forward. And we want to work with the commissioners to make sure that we protect the folks that come through our jail. Majority of the folks that come through our jail, there are violent phones, there are battery phones. There are also unget people that come through that are there for visitors. We see them in Ingalls, we see them in the pharmacy, we see them around us near sandwich outlets. And they thank us for treating them well and looking at them. We have a duty and obligation to do that. And we want to let you all know that we have some concerns about that, and we'd like to work with you all to help us work through some of the solutions that may be needed. I've said everything I needed to say.
You done great. Besides not finding all these pertinent individuals, is there anything that we can do before the jail inspector comes and does his thing?
I need to talk with Mr. Coward, I've talked to him yesterday, briefly let him know without going into details, because I've forgotten the report yet. Probably need to open the line of communication with him and get him through. I like to work through him, communicate with y'all, I'll fix any problems with that. But this is going to have a legal impact. We are going to have to let the judges know if we have to move folks out, if they need transfer work, things in that nature, we'll get to that point. And we will notify them all, what we do as quickly as we do it. But I do need to be very clear on one thing, revenue is not a strong thing. The office of the sheriff has governmental immunity. Has governmental immunity when he's active within the courses code of duty. He is now being put on notice of an unhealthy environment within his jail. If we do not act in a timely manner, we will lose governmental immunities that would apply. That inmates or folks that work in that building begin to have problems, we are on notice that it is an environmental concern at this time.
I don't think that made any problem finding a solution for it, as long as we know. Have to talk to them, what to do?
We've spoken with one contractor, and they gave us a lot of our figure for a man that's been there for 35 years, kind of basically just covering up the land. Probably run around a thousand to come in and completely take care of the issue, just for around a million dollars, just for the jail.
Is the 35 years, is that something jail inspection launch would be okay with?
Well, that contractor said, if we still in that jail 35 years, we'll have to come back and speed back again to do exactly the same.
I mean, the goal is not to be, hopefully.
I spoke to Kim about, and then I added to the paper to give her quotes, to do this, but just wanted to let y'all know where we're at, what we're seeing.
I gave directed, directed to the project manager, he is getting with the people who did this, the report, he's getting me a request for proposals together, and we will run it and ask for other things in the books. That was done this week. Yeah.
I do foresee the jail inspector coming out really soon.
Well, he's specing on the solution.
No, sure.
Someone, a retired engineer or something like that to...
The contractors, the group that came out and gave a picture the other day, or looked at it, they specialized in this. I think if they can specialize in it.
May I please?
Yeah. But either way, it will not be a costly adventure.
The jail inspector came out, and we had the same type of issue. They found lead, and also that asbestos. At that time, we had all the asbestos from moving to the courthouse. And we had to mediate all that. And they was a company came in with approval with the jail inspection to seal that lead paint. And that's, that was the route that we took at that time. And I'm thinking about that time, it's like $75,000 we spent just to get that jail to where it could be used. Because they was like, three or four months, we didn't even house no prisoners in the jail because of that mediation.
Well, what's that to mean?
Asbestos was not removed, asbestos is still in the courthouse.
Asbestos was not removed, asbestos is still in the courthouse. Our court right there, she'll tell you that two thousand ten, Florida figured out asbestos was still there and it's still there today.
Not in my office, it's not in my office, but in the other, for the filings and the other county offices. That's why they closed my office down and we were in the courtroom for four months because of removal, when the commissioners gave me the approval when I got elected to redo my office.
You're talking about downstairs, it's still?
Downstairs in my office.
But it's still downstairs.
But it's still in that, that, that same tile is there in the corner of the courthouse in the register of deeds, probably in the tax office.
When we spoke the other day with the group that came out, there was some questions about asbestos and Florida, so that hasn't been addressed there. So, uh, and you made, you was talking about two thousand eight, they came to paint, painted the area and?
It's sealed.
Sealed. So basically they've done a mandate instead of removing. That, that they've been coming off and now it's time to remove.
Yeah, that's over thirty years now.
Yeah. Yeah. And, and we did not address the issue of the chipping paint or anything like that. The jail inspectors has come in a few times before then and they called us. And since I've been sheriff, he's, he's addressed it more this time. And, uh, that's what I brought it forward.
Just, there we go, Dave. For Sean.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Brown State.
Get that sound, Brandon.
Yeah.
In, uh, August of two thousand twenty-two, we approved the purchase of two new ambulances. Order was placed in September of the same year with the promise of it being completed at some point. The right of all of that, that's some point. The, a little background, the newest ambulance we have now is, uh, three years old. That's seventy-eight thousand miles, uh, creeping down to the oldest, which is about seven years old, one hundred forty thousand miles. They average about a thousand mile a week on a, on weekly. They projected delivery of the two ambulances we have ordered as of yesterday was late in the third quarter of two thousand twenty-five. So we're still looking at about two more years. Braced out to several vendors over the last couple of days. That seems to be the, uh, market average anywhere from twelve to thirty-six months, uh, act, act with place in order, uh, to deliver a new, uh, newly constructed ambulance. Again, trying to keep from having to mandate things and try to, to keep things moving forward. I think I, a little, a little bit of a, a four-year plan gives back what we need to be. Braced out to a couple of red mouth vendors where they take a nearly recognition box and place it on a, a new truck, uh, refurbished, it has the same warranty as a new truck and its, uh, current market time is anywhere from ninety to one hundred eighty days. So considering that is a pretty huge. Uh, so the, the plan I've kind of got developed is, uh, would like, and, and we do have a lease set assignment for the purchase of two ambulances we've been rolling in forward for these budget years. So the, the funding is, is there to start the process. Would like to start the purchase process for a, a remounted ambulance manual, uh, which would be at the, the, the current projection, behind twenty to one hundred eighty days. That would give us two options, that, that gives us the truck we need to get under us for manual to kind of stop the bleeding a little bit, get, get some more reliable ambulances on the road. And it would give us the box to remount at least one more time, uh, to, as a, a cost savings in, instead of buying a brand new ambulance. And then once that would be out of this budget, the current budget cycle that's been portioned, uh, approaches now. Um, and then the next budget year, go ahead and remount one of the existing trucks that we have, which would give us the, the second truck, either leave the trucks that we have placed on order and with the prediction to every day in two thousand twenty-five, which would be the third budget cycle. Or we're looking for a, a different vendor that can provide them within that same time window. And then the, the fourth year would be to remount one of those trucks and that would give us back into the cycle of, of having a new truck available every year. The, the, what we were doing before COVID, before all the market shortfalls, we were buying a truck a year and it would stay in rotation for a total of four years and it would go off and if they, uh, either surplus or, or trade again, that way it keeps the mileage down, um, because we, we are the only town for emergency over here. We, we, like I said, average about a thousand miles a week per truck and that's, you know, four truck rotation. So the mileage goes up pretty quick. And I don't feel like that we can just sit by and wait until two thousand twenty-five for two, or do something else. So with this, I'd like to go ahead and, uh, do, because, you know, it will, it's, it will be under the formal purpose, we'll have to run it again. I'd like to go ahead and be used for a, a refurbished, remounted truck and use the funds that have been outdated now and get, uh, truck under us within the next four or five months and then go forward with that plan in the, the following budget year.
We got your truck every year anyway, don't we?
We've got my mind because of the code and we ordered, that's why we had to order two at a time and it, the delivery date is just to push back. But I did have them being down in the third quarter of two thousand twenty-five now instead of, I don't know. So we're running progress.
So just to clarify, the funding for the one order now for your pre-orders would just take away from one of the two that were going to be pre-ordered?
Yeah. It, it would, it would use the money that's outdated now, but that funding is?
Renewable.
It, we're voting for one every year anyway. So it would take away from one now, but we would have to budget for that one, which would be three but, or two more years from now, maybe twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
So you would still need the order for the two that are projected to come through in two thousand twenty-five, but use the funds, um, to purchase the one that you found and, and keep, keep, keep reliable, uh, trucks on the road for your staff. That sounds like a good plan to make. I would, I would make the motion that we allow Brian to do that, is there's no part of it?
Definitely good process. So?
The, the normal vet box test takes a couple of months, but I'm running, um, to, to make some things and how that starts for minimum seven days to advertise it is very important to, to expedite a little bit. So we, you know, we wait a month to, to execute the incident a month. While I'm in the ward bed, we're already two more months down the road.
That's an eternity question. Can we swing that up legally, Jay? That's a long range. Is there, what's, what's the problem? What is like the process? Establish, they're going to be cheaper than a brand new.
Rather than around two hundred fifty thousand dollars. New, completely new trucks are anywhere from three to twenty-five plus, depending on the equipment you get with. Those are, uh, far less substantial savings, but it's something I think that's trying to expedite as much as we can. None of the purchasing policies says advertise for minimum seven days.
What usually takes so long is when the states come in, you bring it forward, where you approve the one, then he goes and makes sure they're apples to apples. He can do that and then bring that presentation to you without skipping, with skipping that one section. And I can hold you the ones that can't be.
Yeah, outside town. Did you second that motion, Liam?
That motion in the second is remember second.
Hold fire. Thanks, Brian. Jason, we're in, that's probably.
Jason was called out with a military cop, so he did supply, uh, the S and S as well. I can have a jail report and I did tell him to go, go forward with that, with the West proposal, so.
So everybody's got the possible manager's report, you can review that on your own time. Follow your.
All right. So this is the report for the period ending twelve thirty-one of two thousand twenty-three. And that's our unrestricted cash balances in our general fund, technology, community bank, and North Carolina Capital Management Trust are eight million, one thirty-eight, five, twelve, sixty-eight. Those combined total for the two different general fund accounts. If you move on down to the page, they have our projects, also House of North Carolina Capital Management Trust, the balance there is three, three million, three hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred dollars, fifteen cents on our school capital project. And also House of North Carolina Capital Management Trust is one hundred twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and two dollars and twenty-nine cents. Our American Rescue Fund, that's housed at, um, you know, the community bank, the balance on that is six hundred and forty-nine thousand, one hundred and one dollars and thirty-six cents. We do have an expenditure deck, one hundred and twelve, one hundred and twenty-four, so we need to start thinking about planning on how to extend that money. And I can put a packet together, bring out the next meeting on just what is applicable and what I can spend it on. And these gift grant were just for the courthouse, also the House of North Carolina Capital Management Trust. And the balance is four million, nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty-eight cents. All of the interest that is accrued on these accounts, um, for this month was forty-six thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty-eight cents. Year to date, we accrued two hundred and ninety-four, seven hundred and forty-one dollars, eighty-six cents in interest. If you skip onto page two and go down to the highlighted portion at the bottom of the page, and this is for our total tax collections. And this was for the period of December thirty-first. The current year tax collections that were drawn in was three million, two hundred and eighty-three thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and twenty-three cents. Prior to your taxes that were collected were twelve thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two dollars and forty-six cents. For a total collected of three million, two hundred and nine hundred and six thousand, five hundred and twelve dollars and sixty-five cents. And then at the end, which includes our BTS, will speak to four thousand, eight hundred and four dollars and one six cents. Go over to the highlight and portion on page three. Uh, here's today, uh, for our real. And this is the, um, the total collected was seven million, sixty-five thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars and ninety-three cents. And then the end total is three hundred and thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars and eighteen cents. Prior to year to date, it's numbers always sit there below for your reference. And our current year, boom percentage, uh, is seventy-four point four percent. And the prior year to date, we were at forty-two point sixty-seven percent. So total land is collected, uh, that basically includes the real end and end date was seven one three hundred. If you move on to page four of the report, uh, this is for the highlighted portion. And if our revenues and our expenditures for the month of December, our revenues were thirty thousand, eight hundred and eighty-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-eight dollars and forty-five cents. Our expenditures were two million, seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents. We got obviously plus, uh, one point eight million. If you flip over to page five, it's just got the revenue to date and our expenditures to date. Uh, so we are still at a deficit of two hundred and seventy-six thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars and five cents after, um, we included all of the years. All of the months in this fiscal year, sorry. Our prior year to date, we had, um, the difference was twenty thousand, one hundred and thirty-sixty-eight. If you flip over to page six, this is our sales tax collections. This, the sales tax satisfied money and in December, we actually received, uh, the money that was collected in October and it's distributed to us in December. It was two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars, thirty, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, thirty-six dollars and fifty-six cents for a year to date of one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand, four hundred, or eight hundred and sixty-six dollars and eighty-one cents. Our variances are listed down here and the school support is listed along with our growth and, our growth percentage, which was about one six, one percent. And on the quarter cent sales tax alone, and we have, um, collected, uh, one, one million, that's what we're setting aside and transferring over into our, our Carolina Capital Management Trust and our capital projects. But we are setting that money aside and we're just working off that balance that was already there. And if you go to page seven, this is the analysis of the past two taxes. And if you look in, on the very bottom of the fiscal year, being six thirty, two thousand twenty-three, and they collected, uh, two point two five eight. I'm sorry, I've lost my place here. Two million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and nine cents. So they are, uh, as far as the past years where their foreclosures began, they are still whittling down with those and some are starting to continue to come down. They have, that, some of them are having increases, but it's currently interest, I didn't check on that to see why some of the numbers have been increased today, it's currently just the interest that's occurring on those. They have been whittling down on them past years since the foreclosure went forward. Over, any questions during our report?
You ready, guys?
We do need, I do have one thing, we do need to move some money for, uh, budget revision. I apologize. I didn't get the budget and amendment put together, but I do have the information. She's needing to move some money, um, from five seventy-two with the party side. What, five seventy-two is, it's not your, is that your provider or is that seventy-three?
Seventy-two.
Five seventy-two.
Two is providers.
It's your providers. So she's moved, she wanted to move, uh, some money, try five seventy-two to five sixteen. Five sixteen is four. Family, family, the donor here. Well, help the family. Okay. So, um, she just needs to move three thousand dollars to help it together, that's in the end and presented to me. So we just need to make a motion to approve that. I'll, I'll do the, if, if I get your approval, I want to do the journal interest so that she can take care of her expenditures and then I'll bring the formal amendment at the next meeting to decide.
I'll make the motion to, to, from line of, 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 of.
But it's entered department, that's all we got of it for you.
I was saying to approve that too.
Is your second? So, any discussion? Tom Flamer? All right. We've got another public comment. Anybody else supposed to chime in?
I stated she was to have time, free to have her, other foreign names, press. I'm asking for a reboot right now. We've been going for the back. They were getting forms and studying communities on all this stuff, publishing and all that. They only got forms and studying communities on all this stuff, publishing and all this trash. If they're not willing to assist, she's not going to be doing that anymore, maybe in fact, so are you just willing to give a re vote?
It's a bold decision.
Yeah, I was, it was just a lady, you happen to done it, just thirty seconds.
I think we need to take it up against what, and we need to.
It's a bold decision.
I said, I think we need to take the public opinion, but before, I think we need to redesign the plan. But we need to call again, but before, definitely need to be put in place, because this is, it's.
I totally agree with that, and people are making money.
My motion has to.
Has to. Putting the herd system on hold. Or anything, coming up on the plan of the hearing, after we have at least one more hearing.
So you want to get back to the.
Before you do that, if you're my hardback, that's what I'm gonna cost you.
It's gonna be expensive.
The thing about it was, it was took out by the board. Why must it spend so hard, fifty thousand?
I've said it more than. Three involved, let's be silent. I am, the chairman of the board contract, say when you can to.
Can't go back.
Snowbird and dark.
I think we've gone over Snowbird about the last time, that red contract, if not him.
Yes, we do.
To give permission to move back, so, so three of them all four.
So which ones can you put back? That right, that black screen?
I didn't even know if the branch still had one, there's not been complaints about it. I didn't know, and it was, I just, that was my own name, I didn't even know. From my understanding, this may pretty well maintain the private community on Wilds Creek.
So which ones can you move back?
Does anybody move? When you spoke?
Well, their contract tied to, to the ones that are on four service line.
You just break the contract with the other. You just break the contract.
That's the contract, and I believe when they come last, you gotta give three dozen to them back.
So.
They still have a little talking to do, just had a question, so.
If you're not gonna move back, they take that, they want that discrimination, you just play with the ground, yeah? So you can put fire green, but that's free.
Fire greens on the four service number, on the four service stand, we want our bond down to the four service.
That, so they may not be able to be put back without.
Check to see if that contract, since when folks never got placed down. With the fans up there, so there's twenty thousand dollars to show.
I think the next, that it might be.
The fans, fire green can have a booth, written, by Google, fans out of that tree.
Yeah, trying to get the whole, now the price, talking about the price system. Oh, good, everyone.
I don't know on context, some of them.
It's not worth it, but I, but I, what I'm saying, I know you're talking about the cost. So far, we spent fifty thousand dollars on turning these signs down and all that. Well, the board voted to do that, it wasn't the people who voted. So the board cost us, the taxpayers, fifty thousand dollars.
Let's put it on, let's put it on record, and then we got an election issue, we'll let them take the side period.
I think, I think they need to have a vote tonight, put the ones that you can, that's on the state, or property, buy them. And then, if the bar is something, every contract, whatever.
But then we need to come up with a plan, a sustainable plan.
It's more, it's a bold decision.
That would be my wish, what you just said, right? So once we can put back, that we have, we don't have to look at the contracts again. And put them back, get in with the public, it's their money that we're spending. And a lot of them have a lot of good ideas too. I may not have been keeping up well, but I too was surprised when I took my trash out and, and saw a huge fence out at the recital center. So I was still looking to hear, and have been asking for public hearings. But the flip side of that is, and I know that you all know all over this county, there's been a great deal of illness. And a lot of it has been with county employees and county employees who did, who this. So, I'm not blaming anybody at all. I, I have sworn to uphold the laws to the best of my ability. Other things I swore to do was to represent the majority of people to the best of my ability. And, and I will stand by that.
It creates a sanitation problem too, if I don't pay you life. Normally, I can walk through the dumpster from my house. So my, my, I'll be like walking, I can carry two bags of garbage, one in chair, four in the dumpster, fall back on. Get that. But where is man? My wife and I both, it's been in my life, it's on disability, it's taken care of three times. I'm just, I'm just giving you example, I'm most of the people around the county all, the oldest people, we're old, we're getting old. But it creates a problem, a sanitation problem for me, when I have to throw four or five bags of garbage, or ten and five on the truck. If it's open, I have a gas burner, hopefully, if it's open, gas, garbage, awesome, food, I read all the lists, I've got rest to clean up every time I go to the truck. Set it up like a week. It's a sanitation problem. If I'm not in there, I'm getting the little lumber, he can do a bathroom, it's not in my house, I've got a lot of garbage truck. I don't know how long the truck. It would have a, take a, get on the guys, and I didn't find it out for twenty miles in the middle of the truck. It's just my part, man, I said, it was really hard.
The decision did, as quick as you did, because of a few bad habits. We had enforced pro forma, we wouldn't have.
The camera, catch, it's done, I threatened to report, but I actually told you, don't tell me, I'm gonna report you.
I love you, David, Sam, Ray, Ty, and Stephen Ford.
Well, it's that, if you talk about a mess around the dummy, go run out here on any given day, if they weren't present all the time, not out here at recital center, they would be a mess around over there. They cleaning up desks. Think about.
Let me say, let me say this too. When, when, I work pretty good size program either, so I asked us, managed work for me. When, when we leaving in the morning, we drive, jump. When you have to jump, we don't sit around the truck, very calm for time. I guarantee at eight-thirty in the morning, walking to sanitation department, they some of them are not off sometimes. And I know they want to complain about how dirty the science is and this and that. Thing of this, when they, when they put applications, if they go to work for sanitation department, they know they're gonna be dealing with garbage. If I've got a set business, and I can come to set, I know exactly what I'm doing. That's what they sign up for. I don't want to hear about how their, their job is to plan and decide, that's what, that's what us taxpayers paying for. When I go to job, they, I know what I'm, and I don't send the truck for hire to them before I can learn. When I get to the job, I gotta learn. That's a lot of our problem, Rick. You can tell me anytime, and I'll say, play for county employees, running up down the road, the problem, you know, a lot of nights, it's got to be.
I'm on the water, the garbage truck, that's the most funny year of.
But I mean, I think, that's the way it is, and our, our employees, if, if, kind of like strategy law, if I run my business, fucking video painting, I'd be broke more. And it's the same one with the county. We hire, they wait until they learn, that, that's their job, sanitation, play nothing around our site. But I think we need to vote, vote it back in, have our donors come back tomorrow. And then you can have public meeting, or whatever you want to come, come up with a plan, but to ones that can go back, I think you need to vote tonight, or put them back.
It's a bold decision. Three named motion?
I'm gonna make a motion that the ones that we can put back in, that won't be violating the contracts, and which ones would that be, Kim?
Of course, I can make a phone call to the forest service, it may not violate any of them, I don't know, but I can call them, this will be my first time talking with them.
And then, along with that motion, I would recommend that we set some public here, public hearings. So that, so that our citizens. Give us their ideas. I certainly don't have all the ideas, and I'm just one of five, but I need help when I'm forming plans that affect everybody in my county, and this one does. And so I would.
We need, we need a new system, the open approach, but we do need to, to work on something. And we probably need a public hearing sooner rather than later, so we can put something on.
She only called me last call, too. You're looking at one truck, one that I get, one way we got it. It takes two hundred cars to ride within that job. That's a way of closing our, one truck won't be able to. But that's another thing, when you look at them, whether it's always, everybody's looking. Forty dollar, a few, a couple, a hundred pieces of color, I don't know, don't forget that.
And, and these are ideas, and, and that, I, I want to hear from you both when we have our, when we have the meeting, I knew you promised to be here, I want to hear from you.
You got a motion on the floor, sir, second. Second. Second, you want a second, Tom Faver? Anything else?
Nine thousand dollars, that's what I.
What? Hundred ninety thousand dollars.
Impression by all paper?
What's been said, that?
Worst sound, but.
We were talking about the end, it's not gonna go out, you can't, can't, but I can't so fast. They have a party planned for the end, have to go on the side door, we still have to.
It doesn't, the, the tax, the veil, the veil's not, I am your traps, it's not enough to block to. But I know, boy, I've had my sample also. I know, I know. Anything else, public comment? Alright, moving on to discussion now. Releases and discovered, releases of five thousand, one hundred and seventy-nine dollars and sixty-five cents, and discovered some one thousand, one hundred and sixty dollars and nine cents, is there most to approve? Third second. Any discussion? Tom Faver? Need to appoint Lacy Stewart to the library board at the recommendation of Director Shipp. We got a motion to her second. Being discussion with Lacy. Tom Faver? Bean Pung.
There's one thing that I, I would like to bring up now, was on, on the agenda, but I would like to mention, and. Ms. Stevens has already left. But she is raising funds, looking at grants to build a fitness center in our county that would connect with the senior center. And transit medical, yeah, up there. I would like to, for the board to be thinking about designating the four heel property. That would tie with that plan and project. And once, once she has property dedicated, then she will be able to go after grants, not only to build the center, but to sustain it. Sustain the, the operation of it.
Okay. Everybody keep that in mind.
And we're talking.
You didn't have to go, this is for, to make top garden, see what's.
Hey, three, yeah.
We got to figure out courthouse first. Permission to apply for broadband under four hundred thousand dollars.
That, I did buy this one, and I'm gonna head and call, and we were hoping that we could expand the. Awesome west, all the way down the bypass, and they would have free connection to the business, or, you know, with this grant. It's not hardly lost down that way, but I'm still working on it.
Sir, motion to approve.
So.
Third second. Tom Faver. Alright, got a motion to approve on one eleven, purchasing the judicial system for court, eleven thousand dollars. One sixteen, except for recommendation of the rent account for the new employee, one ten, hire extra staff for sanitation, man sites. We're gonna keep our man sites on down?
Some people are liking the man sites.
I think something that we need to main people sites, but I think that we need to utilize, like with the asylum center, I think. The biggest complaint on the curb is not having twenty-four access, twenty-four hour access to dump.
Okay.
Because so many people have their external.
Twelve twenty-eight, thirty-five thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars to the jail budget for medical expense. Twelve twenty-eight, allowing one C machine to be taken back to the health department, and one eighteen, like fourteen thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars and sixty-three cents. For Western Carolina Communications, being ministry ideas, I must correct these problems. Third second, Tom Faver? Got a reform transportation advisory board members. I'm assuming these are the recommendations, or are these operating members, if they're getting.
They're operating members.
Carol Phillips, Sammy C, Ginger Clay, want the hell, Dennis Mars, and Tony Odom.
And they're all willing, yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
So.
Sir, second?
I'm on it.
Second, any discussion?
I will say that last night, that DOT meeting, one of the pain, the director of Division fourteen. Promised to do some sort of action on the walk, crosswalk from the town hall. There was, there were a lot of complaints about people almost getting hit by cars going through there, and she personally said that, that she would look into that and get back with the mayor.
Okay. Uh, privilege without pay.
I got a motion in a second, I need.
Oh, I'll favor. Alright, privilege without pay for your employee.
And yeah, she had to go to the doctor, but we knew that when she was hired.
Sir, motion, third second, second, discussion. Tom Faver? Insurance deals, situation increase. Need to open enrollment back.
Well, they're doing it a little different, we can have open enrollment and have the people from. The insurance companies to come here, you can just allow, you can allow the employees to come and go and, and visit with them, you know, during the day. And that's what's going.
Allow the representatives, to present like what changes are happening, or if there's voluntary packages that they can find it for, you know, also, like, we can be ready to sit down and make changes for when the employees come in. Like, we can help involve them in those things, or change what they like.
Okay.
It's the most informative and faster way to help our people get enrolled.
Second. Do we need, do we need to vote on that?
If you're giving permission to move, we're on the insurance. If you're giving permission to move, we're on the insurance, I think we signed in for three years, so the motion's there, I just always like to tell you.
They're not informed directly, and there's some discussion on trees at the courthouse.
Um, two trees, the two biggest ones in the front, we're going to be taking them down, we thought we were going to have to bid that out, but our guys feel like they can take them down. So we went and did it, then it did, so we're going to be doing it, so if you see any action up there on Saturday, that's what they're going to be doing. It's, it's destroying the, um, the, the brick and the drainage into the bottom part of, they're going to have to get to the wall, yeah.
They're in your own business. All right. Take motion to go in club session, M G S one forty three, three eight, ten, eleven, eight, one, three, five, and six, the privilege for confidential information, attorney court privilege. Personnel contracts with five minute break.
So.
Okay.